Okay, it's final four on Monday, November 21st, and we'll call the city council meeting order. I'd like to welcome everyone to our meeting. Everyone, please stand and join me to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call them?
Jody, here, Harley.
Here.
Brad.
Here.
Rodney.
Here.
Tyler.
Here.
Done.
Thank you. entertain a motion to approve today's agenda.
One second.
The motion is second, so ready discussion about the agenda? During that vote, please, Deb.
Jody, yes.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you. Across the mayor's desk, I want to thank Caitlin Hag for being our videographer today. And with Thanksgiving coming up, I'd just like to wish everyone a blessed Thanksgiving holiday this year and hope that everyone's able to spend some time with family or friends this year. That morning, actually Thanksgiving morning, there's the Turkey Trot, just a reminder, and it's sponsored by the Rotary Club. Starts, I believe, at eight-thirty on Thursday morning, Thanksgiving Day. They're gonna meet at PMC, they're on State Street. And then there's the Community Thanksgiving Dinner between eleven and one on Thanksgiving Day. And again, this year it's only carryout and delivery, and that, again, is at State Stadium Presentation Center. So, does the council have anything they would like to add?
The only thing I would add is there's still a need for pies for the Community Thanksgiving. If anybody would be willing to donate pies, Wednesday afternoon, one to three, drop off at the Presentation Center, or Thanksgiving morning from eight to ten. We never turn it down, but it takes about eighty pies for that project. So, thank you, everybody who gives the opportunity.
Okay, an update from the city administration.
A few amendments. City Hall and city offices will be closed this Thursday and Friday for the Thanksgiving holiday. Construction continues on wrapping up various street projects. Phillips Street, all five blocks of that, from North Street to Pine Street, that is scheduled to open up the afternoon or evening of Wednesday, November twenty-third. It'll just be open to local traffic, but you'll be able to get in and out of your driveway, park your car there, and not scrape in the morning. And then, there'll be some continued work on that as weather permits in terms of doing any backfilling, just kind of site cleanup. But we'll be opening on the Sunday, twenty-third, the local traffic. Work on the skate park has resumed today with the warm weather, so they took a week off and had everything covered with the cold snap that we had. And then the plan for them is to continue working as long as they can, weather and ground temperatures permitting. And then I just wanted to recognize Dick Lucas, who in the Cassuth County Advance, their progress edition back in October, he was named the Public Servant of the Year. And Dick joined the city back in nineteen eighty-seven as a wastewater operator, and then, most recently, before his retirement, back in twenty nineteen, he was our Park Superintendent. And since then, he's come back every year, which he greatly appreciated, worked for us part-time. So, I just wanted to re-quick the criteria for that award, which goes to a Cassuth County resident employed by the government, who has gone above and beyond his or her normal duties to ensure the citizenly served in a manner is recognized and appreciated, whether for a single effort, a series of efforts, or over a period of time. Dick is an extremely nice, friendly guy, very humble. You know, so the title of Invisible Hero, that was the article, I thought was well fitting. But thirty-five years he had with the city, and a lot of, a couple weeks ago, I literally just called him Project M in the nineties. So, institutional knowledge is a lot of value. So, I just wanted to recognize Dick and congratulate him on the award from the Cassuth County Advance Progress Edition.
Thank you. Agenda item number seven, this is the citizens' opportunity to address council on any item that's out on the agenda. Don't see anyone here in the council chambers. We'll move to agenda item number eight, that's the consent agenda, that includes approving the minutes from our November seventh work session and regular city council meeting, approving a special Class C liquor license for going to Axe House, approve the department reports, and approve the minutes from the various boards and commissions that have met, and approve the bills that are to be paid this cycle, and approving Jacob's administrative report. A motion from Harley, second from Tyler, any discussion? Vote please, Deb.
Jody, yes.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Motion carried. Agenda item number nine, under whole business, this is a resolution pertaining to EMS schedules.
So, this would, resolution would approve a new scheduling and timing policy for full-time EMS employees. Currently, they work a three-days-on, three-days-off shift, that middle day being considered a non-call day, which paid a lower rate, which is the full rate if they're actually called in. It's one thing that we recognize through kind of implementing this new system that we have, and workforce retention, recruitment, and kind of seeing other services shift away from that type of schedule. And so, that's what we're proposing to do as well. The new schedule, we've worked on it, a two-week timeframe, so one week you'd have three shifts, the second week, two shifts. You know, what days those are would vary, just so you're not always working the same days. It would still follow by a week in terms of calculating hours in a week and overtime, even though it's... How in language you consider EMS the same emergency services like police or fire? You know, in terms of kind of overtime rules and things like that, a department later does not consider them that, unless they're combined with that. So, EMS does still have a forty-hour, you know, work week in terms of when overtime kicks in. So, that first week, you know, there would be some, you know, guaranteed overtime on that. And then that second week, you know, would offset that, so they could count that time, you know, or you could use, you know, chances are if there's calls, you know, during downtime hours, and they go back to their regular rate. So, we do still maintain the sixteen and eight schedule that we currently have in the twenty-four-hour shift. So, from seven AM to eleven PM is the full regular rate, and then they go into downtime, which would be from eleven PM to seven AM. That's at seven-twenty-five an hour. If there's a call for service, then it's a minimum two hours pay at regular rate. In that policy as well, it does reference that, this would apply immediately to new hires, and then the existing staff. We'd still work under the current scheduling policy until we can build out the schedule far enough in advance with additional hires or additional volunteers PRN, so then we can all jump to that full schedule change. It's kind of been one of the challenges, how we can't get to a new schedule until we have more people, but it's hard to recruit people under the current schedule. So, that's where we'll start new hires over this, and our job actually is to flex that. And then once we can get a schedule filled, then we'll transition the existing full-time staff to that schedule as well. Hopefully, that'll just be, you know, a temporary, you know, for a month or two, that will still be operated under the current schedule.
Any questions about this?
Yeah, I have the motion to approve the regulation managing the EMS full-time schedule and current policy.
A motion from Rodney, second from Jody, any discussion? During that vote, please, Deb.
Jody, yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Motion carried. Agenda item number ten, this is the second and third reading of an ordinance concerning handicap parking regulations.
Try the second one.
Excuse me, we'll just do the second reading first, okay? I know that's, just wanted to make it clear. Mayor, I know you're reading what's on the agenda.
Yeah.
Just to make it clear, we're doing the second reading now.
Two of those ordinance would designate an additional handicap parking stall downtown, shown here on the map, on the north, on the west side of North Street to south of State Street. And just kind of based on getting things hopefully in place before winter, fully here, I would recommend approving second and third ordinance.
That's something we paint then? If it's approved, then we would go up and paint again. I'm making a motion, we waive the second reading?
I'll second. A motion from Rodney, second from Tyler, to waive the second reading, any discussion? We'll call Deb.
Jody?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Motion to approve the second reading.
Second.
Motion is second, then, to approve the second reading, any discussion? We'll call Deb.
Jody?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Motion to waive the third reading?
Second.
Motion is second to waive the third reading, any discussion? Vote please, Deb.
Jody?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Motion to approve the third reading.
Second.
Motion is second, then, to approve the third reading, any discussion? Vote please, Deb.
Jody?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Motion carried.
And then, motion to adopt the city ordinance, the ordinance regarding the handicap parking regulations.
I'll second.
A motion is second, then, to adopt this handicap parking ordinance, any discussion? Vote please, Deb.
Jody?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you. Go paint. Agenda item number eleven, this is a resolution approving the airport capital improvement program plan.
This was discussed in the work session, but I'll let Joe provide a quick recap on the proposed plan.
All right, I'm sure your cap doesn't mess with the plan. So, what you have before you is a capital improvement program to stay eligible for every funding. We have to do this every year. About the time, if you look at five years' worth of projects, normally you do that. You guys have before you a plan that shows how you intend to use your FAA entitlement and PIL funds that are available to you to accomplish various projects out of the airport. Those projects include extending the runway and displacing it to get to an overall minimum length of four thousand feet. That includes both turnarounds on both ends. That includes a wall project, that includes lighting the entire runway, and the PAVI and REEL, which is the navigation lights coming in and out of the airport to help this pilot. And then, but there's also storm roll equipment, project management as well. So, those are the projects that are in your capital term that's in there, that is included for you guys to look at, as well as I also prepared a budget summary, to help you guys understand the, kind of, the budget implications of the projects that are in your capital improvement program. And I know you guys will be looking at that soon, in the near future.
So, it doesn't formally approve or authorize any of these projects, just approves the plan for our planning and the FAA's planning coordination as well.
Correct. These projects can be amended at any time, and your next approval process is, first project that are shown here at CAP, you'll get a bill letter, and they'll ask if you want to start with engineering or to proceed forward with it, if it's already planned. Like if it's under, if it's under construction.
Move to approve the resolution.
I'll second.
Motion from Brad, second from Jody, any discussion? Vote please, Deb.
Jody?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Joe.
Agenda item number twelve, this is a resolution pertaining to our storm water management plan.
Federal Hybrids, Inc., has requested an exception from the chapter thirteen-twenty-two, the city storm water management ordinance in relation to a proposed development of approximately twelve thousand square-foot building on the south edge of the property at nineteen oh-two East McGregor Street, or, excuse me, nineteen-twenty East McGregor Street at the former Corteva Research Site. As was discussed at length during the work session, the storm water management ordinance would apply because it's over ten thousand square feet in terms of development. The rationale behind that ordinance is to plan and accommodate, you know, maintenance and upsizing of city storm water infrastructure, as well as the storm water quality, flood control, erosion element of it. Based on the project site being, you know, immediately next to city limits, and the water would flow outside city limits, the water would not impact or enter any of the city's storm water infrastructure. It would also not be flowing directly into a river or a body of water. It would, the proposed plan, it would go over ground, soak in, then enter existing perforated tiles, either soak in further or travel, and then eventually enter the county drainage system to the southeast. So, based on those several factors, we think it would be appropriate for council to consider deeming the area exempt from chapter thirteen-twenty-two requirements, which is what this resolution does.
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion from Harley, second from Brad, any discussion?
I think we just need to verify on the resolution the address. On the resolution with nineteen oh-two, is it nineteen oh-two or nineteen twenty? East McGregor. Just a typo.
Do you have the file to bear?
It's nineteen twenty. It's nineteen twenty?
It's nineteen twenty.
Assessors' site has nineteen twenty.
In the work session.
Yep, it's nineteen twenty in the resolution, so it's nineteen oh-two.
Probably approve it with, and then...
Yeah, move to approve with that correction.
Thank you. Catch, Jody? I will second with that correction.
Okay. Motion is second, with that correction of the correct address, nineteen twenty East McGregor Street? Vote please, Deb.
Jody?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Nineteen twenty? We found out his letter, but thank you.
Very good. Agenda item number thirteen is a resolution that deals with a wastewater treatment facility upgrade project.
WHKS Engineering recently completed preliminary design on the upcoming wastewater treatment plant facility upgrade. At the request of the city, they have prepared an agreement for final design of that project, which is what this resolution would approve. It would be for a billed hourly to an up-not-to-exceed rate, a total amount of nine hundred and eighty thousand dollars. The preliminary plans represent approximately thirty percent of the design work, so this would take us from that thirty to a hundred percent, as well as what's included with that contract in terms of the services covered. Includes project management, coordination with the DNR on design review and approval and permitting, technical assistance in preparing and obtaining financing through the state revolving loan fund, and any other grants or financing options that may be out there. Then, obviously, final design, preparing plans and specifications, equipment needs, construction phasing, geotechnical engineering, and then the construction bidding process. Final design is expected to take approximately one year, so we'd be looking at going to bid on this project in the winter of twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four.
Motion to approve resolution for professional service agreement.
I'll second.
A motion from Rodney, second from Jody, any discussion? Vote please, Deb.
Jody?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you. Agenda item number fourteen, this is a resolution concerning the two thousand twenty-one street improvement project.
So, this is last year's Millen overlay street project. This resolution accepts the project and approves final payment in the amount of four thousand nine hundred thirty-three dollars and sixty-six cents. This covers the remaining retainage, as well as a few hundred dollars' worth of touch-up seating and storm water pollution prevention measures. The project engineer has recommended approving and accepting the project.
To approve.
Second.
A motion from Harley, second from Tyler, any discussion? We'll call Deb.
Jody?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Motion carried. Agenda item number fifteen is a pay application.
This is for the two thousand twenty-two street improvement Millen overlay project. This is pay application number four from Blacktop Services Company in the amount of four hundred and eight thousand seven hundred seventy-two dollars and ninety-five cents. This covers the, for work completed in October. There's still a few outstanding items on that, that project wrapped up this year, or whether, depending, either next spring. But through this pay application, this would represent about ninety-two percent of the total contract price.
I'll move to approve the payout.
I'll second.
Motion from Tyler, second from Jody, any discussion? We'll call Deb.
Jody?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Motion carried. Agenda item number sixteen is another pay application.
This is a pay application number seven from Redding's Gravel and Excavating for McCoy Street, Phillips Street, and Call Street Parking Lot construction projects. Pay application is in the amount of seven hundred and thirty-eight thousand eight hundred fifty-one dollars and ninety-three cents. It is for work completed in October.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion from Rodney, second from Tyler, to approve this pay application, any discussion? We'll call Deb.
Jody?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Motion carried. Agenda item number seventeen pertains to the Cassuth Drift Skippers.
Yeah, the Cassuth Drift Skippers have requested city's approval in their permit application to the DOT to groom and use the right-ofways along highways eighteen and one sixty-nine as snowmobile trails during the winter. So, this has been one that, going back how many years?
Oh, yeah. Last year, when we approved this, there was no snow. I remember that. This year, we have a little bit. Move to approve.
I'll second.
A motion from Harley, second from Jody, any discussion? Vote please, Deb.
Jody?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Motion carried. Agenda item number eighteen pertains to the annual urban renewal report.
Annually, the city's required to submit a report to the state on the city's urban renewal activities, which is the title of a code section. It's what we use for tax increment financing, or TIF. So, this report covers fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, which ended here this past June. In the year, we had three projects that used TIF funding. First was the city's use of TIF to finance the loan payments on the land purchase for the Keek Industrial Park. The second is a property tax rebate to Crimmins Investment, or White Transfer, per the development agreement the city has with them. And then, the third is also a property tax rebate to Fouch Brothers LLC, per the development agreement the city has with them, which was for the redevelopment of the Oberling School into apartments.
Move to approve the report.
I'll second.
Motion from Harley, second from Jody, any discussion? Vote please, Deb.
Jody?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you. Agenda item number nineteen, this is an appointment to the Parks and Rec Commission to fulfill the remainder of Zou Dao's term. Did we?
Just saying, there's a lot on here that I need to.
Okay, all right. Well, hopefully, because that was one last time that Jacob said he would like to have filled particularly, so. Agenda item number twenty, then this is the final notification, also the Cemetery Board Trustee to fill Jenny Weaver's term. Do we have any thoughts about Cemetery Board? That's a council appointment also. Okay, agenda item number twenty-one, this is the final notification of vacancy to the Airport Commission, and Frank Vitsum's term expires November the twenty-seventh of this year, and visiting with Barb, Barb visited with Frank, and he said he was willing to would enjoy another six-year term on the Airport Commission.
Although I did tell him his pay would double.
Okay, perfect. We like that. That's why he said, yes, he wanted to raise, so.
Zero times two is right zero.
Yeah, zero times two is zero.
Good.
Motion to approve Frank Vitsum for the Airport Commission.
I'll second.
Motion from Rodney, second from Jody, to reappoint Frank for the Airport Commission, any discussion? Vote please, Deb.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you, and thank you Frank for accepting this new term for another six years. We look forward to working with you. Agenda item number twenty-two, this is the first notification terms expiring on the Broadband Telecommunication Commission, Jay Givin and Todd Terhark's terms expire the end of this calendar year. And then in addition, we still have an existing vacancy with Marty Flonely's departure in two thousand and eighteen. Rodney, was the school, was that vacancy, did you tell me that the school would suggest someone?
For the parking?
No, for the broadband.
Broadband. I thought Joe just said he would fill that, but maybe I'm wrong.
Yeah, I think we'd had discussions that, and then it never got actually.
I think Joe Carter and I had talked with him.
Yeah.
It was a while back, and he agreed to.
I don't think it ever officially got appointed, and so when we look back at the record, so we're just, I mean, it's great if Joe will fill that role, but we're just re-notifying it because it's been so long and he wasn't officially appointed. And then this is, I mean, the last five years, this group's maybe met once.
Yeah.
It is a commission we're required to have under state law. So it, you know, yeah, it rarely meets.
Todd and who?
And Jay Givin. Yeah, and their terms expire the end of this calendar year. And this is the first notification, but.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Rodney, do you want to follow?
I'll see you tonight later.
Okay, and then Lisa, we could get that all filled.
I'm sure he will.
By the end of the year, so, okay. But, because that one's been vacant since this year. And then we'll move to agenda item number twenty-three, and again, this is the first notification of the term expiring with the Parks and Rec Commission, Samantha Weickert and Rick Klein's terms both expire the end of this calendar year as well. And again, that's just the first notification of that. Agenda item number twenty-four, this is another first notification of the term expiring with the Housing Commission, Dave Van Gorkum and Scott Ray's terms both expire the first of January of next year, two thousand and twenty-three. Those are mayoral appointments, so I'll be visiting with the two of those gentlemen and see if they would like to renew their terms. Agenda item number twenty-five, again, this is another first notification of the terms expiring with the Planning and Zoning Commission, Kendall Pals and Jennifer Harrington's terms both expire again also on the first of January of next year. Those are five-year terms, and those are council appointments. But again, this was just the first notification, so.
Can I ask something?
Sure.
Really quick about number nineteen, the Park and Rec Commission.
Oh, yep.
Is it something that we could ask Joanne Repke Bodine to do a Facebook post about? To see if there's any interested parties out there in the community that we don't know about? And we still have to appoint the person, maybe an outreach that way to see if there's any, and then have them contact the city?
Yeah, we can, I'll talk to Joanne, we'll put something about maybe emphasizing that one, but all the other.
All the others.
Ones we have two vacancies coming up or at least notice of, because I know we do have a new board and commissioner like application form people can fill out if they're interested. So, yeah, I'll talk to her about getting that one out and these others as well.
Yep, good idea. Okay, agenda item number twenty-six, our final agenda item, this is just discussion of law enforcement retention and recruitment.
So, per the email I sent out last week, just kind of wanted an opportunity to kind of talk through some of the kind of broader themes that we're seeing in terms of, you know, law enforcement and that labor force, you know, some of the challenges that comes with that in terms of availability or lack thereof of officers or people, you know, going into the career, as well as where we're at on wages. As we recall, last January, I believe it was, we had given the patrol officers a mid-year bump at that point, because we were looking at wages, you know, going up very aggressively. Unfortunately, we're seeing that again, and we've got two vacancies that are going to be coming up, one current vacancy, you know, vacancy and the one that will become vacant here here very shortly. And so as we look to, you know, try to attract and retain, you know, there's obviously more than than just money when it comes to, you know, these positions that we also want to look at as a whole, but kind of want to go over where we're at today on wages, some comparables, what the different options are in terms of, you know, we hire someone who's not certified, how that process works. And so, you know, have Chief Miller here here tonight, so just kind of want this to be kind of a general discussion, you know, to, and then hopefully get some general direction that at a future council meeting, if we're looking at doing any changes, we can prepare something at that point, so. Bo, you know?
Yeah, you know, we can, like, Jacob did a really good job kind of going through this email, I don't know what you guys kind of got through that the other day when he sent that out, which is kind of going back, you know, when sixteen years ago, when, you know, I, or seventeen years ago, when we applied, you know, there were twenty-some, thirty-some officers we used to get to apply for these jobs. You know, nineteen, we had a handful apply, one certified, and then that person ended up withdrawing. On October of twenty-one, which was our first hire, we had a total of six applicants. We were very fortunate, one certified, because when it came down to testing, no one showed up. And that's, this isn't nor, I mean, this is normal across the state at this point. We just had one now, last, not this last Saturday, but Saturday before, we had twelve applicants going through, we were pretty excited about some of the, I mean, even if they were non-certified, like, but I'm like, well, there's some potential with what we see. Came down to testing day, two showed up. I mean, they just, they don't show up. And with that, only one passed the test. You know, we're moving forward right now with the one that passed. You know, he had, he had a good interview, the test, test he did where he did fine with. But at the same time, we have this all started due to the one opening with John Emzalat retiring. Since that, we had another officer who just put in his two-week notice. He is, he's actually getting out of law enforcement. And, yeah, I mean, he was kind of just, he was kind of up in the air of what he was going to do, and when he talked to a friend where he was thinking about moving, and that friend said, hey, let me make a phone call, he got a job offer his first call driving into a truck for Honda Valley. You know, like, it's just like, he was like, yeah, this is over here, I'm getting out. So he's out. We have a, we just recently found out another officer is, he's in the final stages of being offered a job. That could happen very soon. I have a sheriff in Hancock County has been very open with me that one of our deputy, or one of our officers, he said, I'm going to take him. There's not much you can add with your pay. I mean, if he openly says that to me, and this is stuff we're dealing with, then I just have to sit there and say, okay, like, I mean, and, but the biggest concern is, I mean, we have another opening right now, and is it worth leaving advertising for it? Because you don't have anyone that would fill it. It's not just here. I've, since this has happened, my last week and a half have been, I don't like closing my door in my office, but it's been closed the whole time, because I've been calling and doing surveys and finding out throughout the state. And I know there's, you guys have seen a lot of these, Moses came for me, talking to city clerks from chiefs, from sheriffs, just trying to find out where they're at. And there's a couple here, you're going to see, you know, the one, the one he has here today for you guys. You know, when you look at the twenty-twenty-two comparison on that with cities, you know, if you see it on top, you have Iowa Falls, Centerville, Forest City, Evansburg, Osceola, Escoville, all those guys in front of us, they're all short. The only one that actually officially isn't, well, Evansburg is not right now, they've been very, he goes, we've been very lucky, we've been sneaking through the gaps, I talked to their chief. Today, I talked to the Osceola chief, he is, he said, well, because I said, Howard, you know, we're going to pay more, and he goes, you guys, the north part of the state and central part of the state are way different than south part of the state. He goes, you're not comparing apples to apples. He goes, he goes, for us down here, we're a higher-paid department, we, they're able to, he goes, we lose a lot of guys, but we're able to pick off these real small ones. Well, up here, again, if you also start looking at some of the, Garner is half our size. Garner right now, because they're in Hancock County, and their deputies are so high, their top officer is making seventy-nine thousand. I mean, it's, it's, it's tough.
We've kind of, you know, it's combined of just labor in general, work, you know, you know, the police as a career choice, you know, not seeing as many people going in. And then, you know, back in twenty-twenty-one, when there is that law change with the back of the blue, whether an unintentional consequence or intentional, you know, with that setting new marks for sheriffs having to, you know, see, you know, there's some counties that, you know, their sheriffs got twenty-five, thirty percent increases, while most deputies are tied to their sheriff's pay. And so now you're seeing, you know, proportionally, all those deputy wages go up, so you're seeing a, you know, migration of, you know, cities like ours, you know, going to those higher, much higher paying positions, or, you know, people from the county then going to the state. And then, you know, we don't have anyone really below us that we can, you know, try to pull from, so, you know, that's what really makes it challenging, you know, other than just sending, sending someone to the academy. So, you know, this is just a sample of where we're at for, you know, counties just, you know, immediately in our area.
So that back the blue law, that's a state regulation?
Yeah.
Okay, but just so people understand, this is causing an upward spiral, that they're taking, that the sheriff in the county has to take the whole population of the county, and his wage needs to compare with police chief in the same-sized city, which is, you know, you're moving to a much more populated county to do that. And so he's going to get that higher wage, and that if our police, to retain our police, we're going to have to raise that also. But that larger county is in the same predicament, they're going to have to raise their police so that the next time it comes around, our sheriff is going to have to compare to an even higher price, I mean, a higher salary. And it's just an upward spiral, it's, I hope unintentional, but my gosh, this has to be corrected, it's, there's no way out of this.
Yeah, it's an arms race, I mean.
Yeah, that's right.
I mean, we, I think, you know, one way to look at it, we were never the bottom of the food chain, and right now, our department is. I mean, and the places that we used to grab off the small, you know, I mean, Elko and ten-man apartment would be places people want to look at, you know, if they were at a smaller department, let's move up, you know, you're, you know, examples could be places like Garner, you know, hey, let's look over here. They're not going over here, and that actually is what we heard. There was a guy interested in that, he had interest in a department that had more call line, a little more opportunities to do more things, and he said, I can't do that. I mean, so he looked away. You know, those are, it's tough, and, and that's, you know, when you brought that up with our county, our deputies right now, county, are actually pretty low-paid deputies, and they are, they're above us right now, and I have no doubt.
Yeah.
When it comes here real soon, I've heard what they're looking at, and probably, I mean, if you look at our counties, the three counties to the east of us right now, you can see, the three counties to the east, we have, they're top deputies, these are deputies, are ninety thousand, eighty-nine thousand, eight hundred, eighty-six thousand, these are the, these are road deputies that, that they're getting paid, that's not, they're not talking administration, that is road guys, and.
Is that what our county is looking at?
Uh, I'm not going to say, I don't know if it's to that level at this point, but I'm sure they're going to work that way, because, I mean, otherwise they're going to start losing their people as well.
Yeah, I mean, I can see that we need to increase our police salaries reasonably, but we also.
It's tough, you know, and we know, I mean, you guys were so fortunate, last year, I mean, you guys looked at this, it's tough, what you do and how you do it, but all that.
Yeah, well, I mean, the other thing we all need to do is contact our legislatures. I mean, the elections are just over, now's the time to call them up, you should know them by now, call them up and say, hey, this is not working, and explain how the upward spiral is going to kill all the city's police departments at every level.
Well, I talked to Justice Julia, little John Metzger, who was an original native from here, he is now the State Farmers Instructor. He said about twenty years ago, there was six hundred and fifty municipality police departments in the state of Iowa. I don't know the exact number, but like, four or five years ago, there were three hundred and fifty municipalities, that's how much they're, these one-man departments are, they're just getting dissolved, because they can't control. Right now, I know in the last, in the last year, they've lost like forty-five or fifty more municipality police departments, these small towns are just like, they can't keep anyone. So they're just done, they're closing their doors and having counties take over.
I know that we're probably going to have budget ramifications, you said that in the email, Jacob, I agree, we probably are, but we have to look at doing something.
Yeah.
See it right here on the paper.
Yeah, and that's what, kind of just wanted to have a conversation to bring up all the variables, because, you know, in terms of what comes out of the general fund, you know, police is our, you know, largest department in terms of number of employees, and then also has, you know, the highest, you know, median wage, and so when we, you know, make adjustments there, you know, that shows up, and you definitely notice that in the budget as opposed if it's, you know, just, you know, a one-man department or something like that, that's adjusted, so at the same time, there's, there's obviously cost to having vacancies in terms of, you know, their additional overtime, or you're paying for just that, you know, loss of coverage. You know, and Bo can talk to some, you know, kind of the, at least, short-term kind of options and plans that come up with.
Short-term, right now, what we're kind of looking at is, you know, we want to offer some of our guys, you know, some overtime, but I don't want to burn them out, you know, I, you know, you guys been dealing with EMS on this, I don't want to burn them out. I don't want to make any mandatory. We have, you know, John Emzalat, who is retiring, yeah, and he's got to wait a certain amount of time, I think it's three months or four months, he then could come back and start working part-time. We've had a couple officers in other departments and the sheriff's office, we've had a few deputies, they know what predicament we're in, they have said, if possible, they would be willing to try and help out a little bit part-time, you know, when we're short, because I don't want to, I don't want to get to the point where we start saying we're just not going to have the coverage. I don't want to do that, our, our, our community and our citizens don't deserve that. So I want to do everything in our power to make sure we're giving them the coverage that they deserve. So hopefully, we can get a little help, again, that can't be a permanent solution, giving them guys, they're just, they just know where we're at right now, and they want to help out on that, if, if, again, it's hopefully temporary, looking at that to give a little help. But I know one thing to talk about, like, sending them to the academy, we kind of looked at that, what that costs, when we break it completely down. For someone to, yeah, you have it, so this is actually from another department, but that just kind of, they have their broke down in a, from a contract form, you know, there's, it's about twenty thousand dollars, they're gone for, they're gone for sixteen weeks at the academy, we're paying them the whole time they're gone, plus we have to pay in the tuition, that's very accurate at this point, you know, and all the other benefits, I called Deb the other day when we, I'm going to get her some better numbers for us. All that other stuff is very, food actually, I talked to the academy today, that's actually up to twenty-one hundred, so that's six hundred more, clothing allowance is accurate. So that bottom number right there, that thirty-nine thousand, it's probably, right, it's got forty thousand dollars to send someone to the academy. And that is, we can give them a contract, you know, that's, that's great, but we're still short at the same time. Back here, that doesn't fix anything back here, you know, and sending someone to the academy, you always hope you're sending the right person, but it's like a draft, you don't know, you don't truly know what you have until they're back here, you know? That's why it's great if your wages are up there, or you have the ability to get people that are certified, because you're able to look at their past, like, what have they done, well, how, how have they proven themselves? When you're sending someone to the academy, you don't know much yet, so we're hoping that's our, that's our step right now with that, getting that taken care of.
One thing with the academy, we're gonna, we're in the process of updating our agreement on that. The agreement that was previously used, it was a three-year contract, and they just had to pay if they left that, you know, a year into that three years, they would owe the city, you know, two-thirds of the cost of, you know, of the academy, not the total cost of what it took to send them there. So the things that we're looking at is getting some agreements from other cities, is updating ours, and, you know, like extending that to a four-year contract, and then including, you know, tuition, room, board, you know, a lot of them include wages, so.
Food, wages, yeah.
If you are going to, you know, be leaving early, you know, the city at least is proportionally being made whole, or if another, you know, jurisdiction wants to hire that person, and they're like, hey, I've got, you know, how many dollars left on a contract, you know, they'll a lot of times buy that out, because it's, you know, even buying out someone at twenty thousand dollars, it's half the price and none of the time of what it would take to send someone to the academy. So, you know, we, we can, you know, write that, so, you know, it's, it's much more, you know, reasonable and fair to the city. But, you know, it's still, it doesn't fix a problem, you know, by any means.
Yeah, I mean, it's the same, yeah, the spend, I mean, there's, there's a chance we could, you know, down four officers, you know, it's a very strong possibility, in the next couple of months, we're down four officers. And if we have to send every, you know, if we can find four, I mean, and again, you don't want to, you don't want to have people you don't want, you know, you want to be sure you're having the right fit for our community, and that's the one thing, normally been very fortunate, is getting local people that, you know, they, they want to be in our community. That's one positive about the gentleman, that he is actually moving here already, so that was a great thing, like, he's already, he's already wanting to be here. So that, that made, you know, that gives me a little better feeling about that, you know? You know, you'd find a lot of times when you get these people from other parts of the state, or, you know, all they want is that academy, because once you get, you get a graduation and you get the certification, you have the golden ticket to go anywhere in the state right now in law enforcement. And they've had that happen. Another really quick story, that recently happened at one of the last academies, the guy, kid graduated from the academy, when the chief, you know, the chiefs normally go down, the sheriffs shake their hand, congratulate them, in his congratulations, he put in his two-week notice, because he now got an offer somewhere else. And at other places like this is perfect, they'll pay the forty thousand dollars, and they don't have to pay any overtime, and they don't have to lose someone for sixteen weeks. and they don't have to pay any overtime, and they don't have to lose someone for sixteen weeks, boom, they had somebody in place. For forty grand, opposed to all the other things, you know, and it's just, it's a really, this has happened so fast in the last few years, um.
Something, something else that we've seen, um, increasingly more, I remember, we know, a year or two ago, kinda saw a couple, and they stood out, but now they're, they don't necessarily stand out, but is off, um, departments offering signing bonuses for certified officers, so, um, you know, these are all active um, openings right now, but, uh, Atlantic, they offer seventy-five hundred dollars, um, for a certified officer, Decorah, ten thousand, uh, Newton, eight thousand, um, and, and those are paid out, you know, over like two-year increments, you know, at certain times. Um, you know, so that'd be another option, um, that we could consider. You know, the question on that is, is, you know, it, okay, once that bonus is done, are they just, okay, then gonna be moving to the next higher-paying gig? And then how does that, you know, impact, and, you know, just morale of, you know, paying this new guy, you know, this bonus, and I've been here for how many years doing a good job? Um, you know, so if that's something that, you know, as, as part of a, kind of a package, you know, in terms of kind of increased wages that we have in there, you know, would, would be one thing to consider, but, you know, it.
You know, I think.
Yeah, that's a tough one.
Signing bonuses work fine in the private sector, but, you know, when they're public like that, how, how do they work? I know, if we know somebody at Atlantic and Decorah, I mean, how did that affect morale? For guys that have been on for a long time.
Well, and also, if the next bigger talent is paying signing bonus too, I mean, if it's going to be part of everybody's standard package, its benefit disappears.
I mean, there's some other things that you pointed out that might look to, so.
You know, we did, when we go to, you know, post our next job description, we are, we have gone over a number of changes to that, and just to make a couple of things a little more clear, to hopefully help in the, the recruitment. Um, one is, you know, our lateral transfer language, of having something specified in there that, um, you know, whether it's a, you know, half-year for a full year, but, you know, the, the equivalent of, you know, if you work ten years somewhere else, you know, we obviously aren't gonna expect you to start out at, you know, wait, you know, the, the first step here, you know, we could do a lateral transfer. You know, we don't have any living restrictions, um, you know, a number of communities, you either have to, you know, either live in town, or live within so many miles, or so many minute drive, um, you know.
I thought we did, I thought they had to live within three months.
Our, our restrictions are, there's, there's, uh, two restrictions. If you live outside of town more than eight miles, you are not allowed to bring a city vehicle home. And, uh, other than that, you can live wherever, just, one officer, we have an officer who lives in Fort Dodge, uh, we have another officer that lived, uh, in Hinkac County. Uh, we have one that's in St. Benedict right now.
The chief needs, chief needs to live in the city.
Yeah.
And I, I have a.
I get that.
I think it's a two or three mile.
It's like two or three mile, yeah, we included the suburbs.
Okay, I must think of that.
That was, that was the other one, that was the other one, that was the other little restriction.
But, but also, you know, put in there, like, you know, we've, we get assigned cars that, you know, is, you know, the officers operate out of, and it's not, you're having to rotate, or just get a, you know, one from, from the lots, you know, that'd be another benefit that we can push, but it, you know, there's certainly some things we can, we can do on the sides, but ultimately, it just comes down to the number of officers and money, and.
I mean, I think, uh, and me and Jacob and I have been talking quite a bit, and, you know, we have a, you know, we look at it, and we have a good benefit package, and then, you know, I said, what I've learned is, these younger people, they, just that initial thing, they don't, they're like, okay. And, and what did you say, you had a twenty-two-year-old?
Yeah.
I mean, this is just happening.
Yeah, I interviewed him, and we were going with the benefits package, and he's like, yeah, I don't care, I'm still on my parents' health insurance, so, yeah, it doesn't matter. And I was like, this is like, you know, tens of thousands of dollar value, and it's like, you're just.
When I was twenty-five and first started, I was just like, okay, you know, now I look at them like, oh, these are pretty nice. Like, one of the things we have, it gets, you know, but you can't, you know, and I even try, I've, I've said, I almost told some of these guys, and said, I want, this is so great. And I can see them like, when are we done here? Like, I, I, I mean, I'm ready to go, like, they, it's just, it's, you can't, you can't explain that enough to them right now, uh, and I think it's in a few years into the job, and, or they have a family. That changes everything, you know, and that probably was for me too, that the thing that changed everything for them, so it's just, it's tough to really push how great our benefits are, and, you know, when they, they wanna see a number.
So I think what you're talking about is probably the most important, important part for somebody staying here, I agree, that how, how do they become part of the community, and, you know, is there, is there a way to get them involved in making sure they have friends in town, making sure that they're, you know, if, if there's something the officers do today, that they can hang out and become part of the group, whether it's sandball, ball, whether it's, you know, any of the leagues in town, that kinda stuff too, I think, that really helps to make people feel like they're part of the group, and part of the community, and you know, in addition to, obviously, we have to make weight gains.
Yeah.
And, and one of the, I'll give you another thing, like, I said, when I took over, I said, I wanna get more reserves. I wanna build, be able to train, build within. And so we put on four new reserves, that all had a lot of, well, a couple of them are still in college, uh, and I know one of them really doesn't have a ton of interest in being here. He wants to go somewhere else, and he can't fix that, but, you know, maybe he'll change. Uh, another one we picked up, um, thought she was gonna be great candidate, well, she just left, uh, she already left, and went humble. So we already lost her on that, another one showed up to test and didn't pass the test. So, I mean, that's, that's what we're also trying to like, get the, get some of the local ones here, people that maybe have interest in law enforcement, let's bring them in here, so we're, we're gonna do that again next year, we're gonna keep trying, but that's not a, that doesn't fix anything right now. You know, that's over time, and, you know, and we have a great reserve program, uh, from some of them we have, and some of them just wanna be reserves and don't wanna go the next step, I mean, John Steiner's a great reserve, he went on full-time and said, oh, I don't like this. But he loves reserving, I mean, so it's great to have that, and, so we're, we're still working that angle as well, but that's a, that's a slow process, you know, uh, even we've lost reserves that went full-time somewhere else, and maybe, and we brought them back later. So that's another thing, Kevin Cram was a reserve with us, left, went somewhere else, now we got him back. Some of these, like, I looked at, okay, we lost this reserve, do you humble? Maybe we can get him back, you know, in power, that doesn't help right now, and, you know, maybe some stuff changes. There's such a shortage in law enforcement, um, I just found this out a couple days ago, they're at the point that colleges, they're starting to get, like, you fill out your, uh, FASFA, and, is it FASFA, FASFA?
Yeah.
Uh, once you're done with that, and whatever you owe, they're giving the money back, as long as you're going into law enforcement for school. I just found this out, and, I mean, it was like, what, like, 'cause they're, they're, they're not there, and they're trying to figure out any ways we can get more, I mean, with, with everything taking place, this isn't the greatest profession to be in.
Well, I was gonna ask you, I don't know if we do, uh, do any reach out to the high schools? I mean, do you have like a requirement that you want a law, or a law or criminal degree, or a AA degree with the job positions?
Oh, I mean, we like, I mean, if, obviously, if you can have any law enforcement, uh, you know, background, that's great, you know, we want that, we're not required here.
Okay.
Um, but we have a criminal justice program, we, we do, uh, every Wednesday, every other Wednesday, uh, all the schools in our surrounding communities are invited to Obuna, and we do a program, and every week we do from active shooter trainings, to we'll bring in DNR, we'll bring in judges, we'll bring in the county attorney, we'll, we give them every, we brought DCI in, we do that every year, we did, uh, that started actually with Kendall, and we've continued that. Uh, we've done that for, this is our fourth year, I mean, fifth year doing that, um, kids love it, it's Criminal Justice Club, these kids come, it's not sanctioned by the schools, but they help, um, do it, and then we go down to the academy, so they get a day at the academy, where they go through, they get to see stuff that happens there, like, we're trying, you know, we're, we're trying here, Buffalo Center, we just asked Buffalo Center, they're actually sending students down here now, just to be a part of it, and it's like, yeah, we wanna be, I mean, we're training this proactive, this, what, what, what can we do to get more people interested and wanna come back to what we believe is a great community, you know, I believe that.
We, we've set up some good kinda long-term strategies, which, I mean, we're already in place, but it's, you know, it's, you know, just kinda last, you know, really twenty months, it's just really seen this kind of acute problem emerge, um, that was already, like, it was already a pro- you know, a problem, but, you know, just with, especially with wages and just, um, availability, um, just really just getting crazy.
I just hope some of those things you're doing will, you know, hopefully pay off, maybe not pay off right away, or you won't see them in dollars and cents, but maybe they'll help pay for when you aren't able to obtain somebody, like you said, so.
One, one other thing you mentioned earlier was that you don't wanna not have coverage, is, is that during the day, is that off-hours, you know? Is it something that is, what would it mean for the city to not have twenty-four-seven coverage if the sheriff, can they cover from Sunday through Thursday?
Well, no, it's not about twenty-four hours, it's trying to have multiple, you know, we have high-volume call times, and we have low-volume call times, and, you know, Monday through Friday, uh, during the day, we have very hall- high call lines. Um, best-case scenario, if it works out, um, if we have, like, it'll be myself, the assistant chief, and a day guy. If people take off, normally, we'll move that day guy, or, you know, so then it'll be two of us during the day. Um, busy, uh, higher calling volumes are early afternoon, seems like we have a lot of stuff happen there, um, so we'll have, try and have at least three there. Uh, and then from six to three in the morning, we'll, we try and, we have always had two on. And then from three in the morning till six in the morning, there's always, there's normally always just one on, 'cause it's a lower call volume, um. I guess if we have to change some of that later coverage, and during the day, we have to eliminate a person, you know, maybe there's only one working at night, and I, I just, you know, with.
And I'm not advocating for that, I just.
No, I, I know you're not, you're just trying to hear about it, that's why we're here, we need to.
But, like, in the interim, in the interim, it might be, like, you know, just from a people standpoint.
Right.
Moving, yeah, I mean.
Or, you know.
There's, there's a lot of days where we don't wanna do anything, Mark or I, 'cause we're out on accidents, you know? There's a lot more accidents during the day, and there's a lot more, I mean, there's a lot of accidents where we have three officers on, you know, that, that takes our whole department. We're now, you know, hopefully by the time the next one comes in, you can at least get one of them out of there, or you can get stuff moved, or, you know, stuff like that, and, you know? But then there's times, we, we feel like we have time, but that's just an opportunity for us to try and catch up a little bit, which sometimes doesn't seem like that happens.
And, and do we get support from the county? I mean.
If, if they're available, they, they do help us out, I mean, it's no different in the middle of the night if something major happens. I mean, I, I've been called out in the last two months, probably twice, where I came out, because they were so shorthanded in the county, one of our officers wouldn't help, so we have to have twenty-four-hour coverage, so I said, you go, and I went forty-one right away, and I came out. Yes, they do help out, but I, I know this right now, they're asking for two more officers, or, sorry, two more deputies coming, uh, January, they're trying, and they have a ten-man department, because they're looking for more coverage.
Cause you have a, currently at the county and the, the city, we have the, you know, same number, ten each, but, you know, at the same time, you have the county, um, you know, they're covering.
Two counties.
Yeah.
They're covering, that's a thing, most counties, each county has about eight to ten, and they're half the size. We have ten, and they're twice as big.
So that one guy in that early morning shift is up in Sway City, you know, it.
Yeah, and we, I, I will say, we've been very fortunate with the county, in the middle of the night if something major happens, they're here, you know, if they're available, they come and help out, you know, and that, that is a nice option, and we try and reciprocate if that's a possibility, um, and help that out, and then we just, like, a guy like myself, or Mark, the assistant chief, he'll come out as well, just to help out, and, you know, just, we try and work together on that kinda stuff, when it works. Do you guys have any other questions like that, I'd, I'd be more happy to, when I can't answer them, I mean, it's.
Yeah, I don't know what, I mean, I wanna stay competitive, and always be one that people look at, but obviously, it's a people shortage too, I mean, you can throw money at a problem only so far, and then if you still have a people shortage, you know, and if they don't wanna be in this area, how do you, how do you solve? I don't mind bonuses at a point to where, 'cause that's a one-time, it's not a compounding, you know, expense either, if, if that what we need to help draw. It is a one-time and not a compounding yearly, by adding the salary, and, and you compound that, but maybe, maybe that doesn't work, I, I, whatever, I mean, I'm always willing to look to try to keep the department strong.
The other biggest worry for me is the retention part of it, how to keep the ones we have.
Yeah.
You know, to, uh, uh.
I think that should be a major focus.
One of our oldest businesses, I know what they're asking for this year, if they get them raises, their general force workers will be making more of our guys. And what are the factors? Well, you know, and that, that's a, like, oh, wow, figure that, you're like, look at that, so, you know.
Yeah, it's tough, I mean, you know, they, they're for-profit, they can, you know, maybe work, maybe they're. Yeah, if, if. We're, we're living on tax dollars.
If corporate profits are up ten percent, you can, you know, unfortunately, yeah.
I mean, there's a little bit of difference to that.
There is.
But.
But, I know.
I, I'm always willing to, I wanna make sure we have a safe community, and I wanna make sure our, our officers and our emergency services are treated right, for sure, but.
Yeah, I agree, we need to focus on retention, I think that's priority number one, 'cause you gotta keep the guys you have. And then when you're talking about bonus-ing new hires, the guys you have are, are happy, and they're not looking at the new hire's bonus, and thinking, hey, I've given my, my life to this place.
Yeah, I want my guys to know that, that have been here for ten-plus years, we do care about you, you know, we care about you a lot.
Mm-hmm.
And, but I'm all for a sign-on of some sort, at that point, you know, that's, I, I definitely.
Well, you know, they're gonna end up working more, how do you treat them right when they got more hours, and they got overtime, and, you know, we gotta draw in too.
Yeah.
We gotta retain and draw, and we got nobody to go with, 'cause this is just a profession, right now, like you said, it's, nobody's looking to go.
Yeah, it's. And I, I really think this is true, we're just really starting to see this hit us. I, I, I don't think, I don't, I, I, it's even hard to say this, I don't think we've seen the worst of it here yet, and I know we're already down two, possibly three on a ten man, you know? Losing thirty percent is never good to hear, uh, and, and I think it could get, I think it could get worse, you know, and that is a.
I don't know where your workforce is, you probably have another that'll look to retire, have a year or so.
What's that?
Probably have.
Uh, no, I don't have a date, but, no, I mean, there, I.
You look at some of you have, and you've been a while.
Within a few years, yeah, I mean, that's a couple of years, and we could have another one, yeah, with retirement. The rest, I mean, after that, myself and Mark would be the next ones, you know, at that, are with age, which would've been great, you know, that'd be, boy, what best-case scenario there, you know, um.
Well, I'm sure the current force is being worked a lot harder now because of fewer staff.
We're, well, not yet, we do, this starts the day after Thanksgiving, we lose our first one, and December first, we lose our second, and that's when stuff is gonna start changing.
So for them, I'm sure they would be happy getting more people hired also.
Well, absolutely.
Just so that, so, you know, I, I don't know if the bonus is going to be as negative as we project, just because
Yeah.
it's gonna be a benefit to them too, to have more people working.
Yeah, you know, my goal, I, I mean, like I said, I, I definitely don't wanna get to a mandatory work, you know, that's, you know, you hear about that in places, and nobody's happy about that, when you're told you're now working, you know, the one thing we've been trying to work, changing our schedule to help that out, giving them every other weekends off, um, you know, it's, it's been pretty positive throughout all that, um, for the most part, and, you know, we're trying to do what we need to do to keep moving forward.
What, what are the requirements for reserves? I mean, is there a certain hour, number of hours they need to work?
Um, yeah, we look at ninety-six hours, uh, a year, which is eight hours a month, um, just to come in, um, it used to be, when I first started, it was, you worked a weekend. Now we've been, we've really changed that, uh, due to everyone's work schedules are crazy, um, if, if they're willing to work weekdays, we, uh, weekdays, we'll, we'll take them on that way. Uh, we'll try, you know, definitely, our big push is on big events, your band day, you know, band day is a huge manpower for us, so reserves are, you know, just so beneficial, we use sheriff's department during that one, uh, big parades, big runs, like, those, those are great, you know? That's our big time to really push that, just summer events, uh, A-Bay coming into town, we try and get experts up for that, and they help offset. offset that, um.
So, even if you get five new reserves, it's not going to be able to cover a, a full-time position or something like that?
Okay, and so this is the other thing, a reserve cannot take a full time, they cannot be utilized as a full-time position, our reserves have to only be utilized to assist, so I can't say, well, I got nobody working, but I have two reserves on, that, that, that's not an option for us, uh, ours, you know, if we have a full time of working, that's great, we got a reserve out, now we have an assistant, you know, we have someone to help with it, uh, that's not the, with our reserve program, that's not how that works.
Yep, okay.
Yeah.
So, kind of, you know, for, for next steps, um, you know, really just kind of wanted to, you know, vet this, you know, concern with the full council here, uh, but, you know, at the next council meeting, we'll, Bo and I will continue to work, and we'll put together, um, you know, some, um, options for what we might do for an hourly wage increase, and then what, uh, we could maybe do in terms of if we wanted to pursue, um, a signing bonus, or, or, you know, signing and or retention bonus, um, but, you know, in the interim, if you've got any kind of additional thoughts, or as you've kind of, you know, moved us over and have ideas, um, you know, we certainly welcome them to incorporate into our recommendation, because.
And you guys make the decision.
Yeah, um, but, you know, that's something that, um, you know, we thought about kind of getting in on this one, just to get the wages adjusted, so we get this other job posting up that we know is coming, but it's like, no, let's take a breath, and, you know, it might be a week or two later, but we'd rather have a well thought out process than just trying to rush something through, and, you know, kind of consume all this and make a decision all, all in one night, so.
I'm glad we got to talk about it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I appreciate you saving the time.
Yeah, and we, we appreciate the time that you and Jacob have spent on, on this too, and trying to figure this out, and, so.
It's really important.
Yeah, it is. Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks, Bo.
Okay, one question, just before we, uh, reference, um, what I sent you, uh, about the moving forward with that, um, signing agreement, is that something, do we have to move forward on anything with that tonight, that email, or do we have to wait to the next meeting and that too?
So, we'll just, we'll approve that agreement, um, at the next meeting.
Because he won't go to the academy.
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to, just sorry about that, I just wanted to make sure we're not, uh, missing anything on that, so, okay.
And, and I'll send out what we have as a draft in those examples.
Okay.
Of the training agreement.
Okay, this brings us to the end of our published agenda, it is six seventeen, our entertained motion to adjourn.
So, move.
Second.
We have a motion of second, the meeting's adjourned, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bo.
Thank you, Bo.